Good evening. Thank you all for coming to our board meeting. I appreciate you taking the time to join us. This is the P-12 meeting of the Dearborn Board of Education for November 14th, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dan Broglio?
Here.
Trustee Moszep?
Here.
Trustee Petrikov?
Here.
Trustee Thorp?
Here.
Trustee Watts?
Here.
President McDonald?
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Dave Mustenin and Ms. Bob Addy will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Sorry, pulling double duty there, audio and pledge guy, sorry.
I think he had to step off.
Okay. I know the words, so we can go without them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items?
Thank you. I'm filling in for Dr. Myleko today. He was under the weather. I know he wanted to be here, but I get the honor of running the board for our side today. We have several retirements. We have Mary Baji, 25 and three quarters years of service. Amira De Cola, 21 and a half years of service. Armenia Espinoza, 18 and three quarters years of service. Jeffrey Del Judas, 27 and two thirds years of service. Mark Kent, 31 years of service. Mike Kostavasky, 24 and a third years of service. Edward Missouri, 20 years of service. And Thomas Toth, 36 years of service. Congratulations to them.
I want to thank all of them for their service and dedicating so much of their careers and their lives to helping our district and our students.
All right. Move on to non-agenda items? We have a couple of items. We were awarded the electric bus grant of roughly 18 electrical buses from the Department of EPA, which is good. We just got notified of that. Those buses obviously will be a long ways out because of the backlog for electrical buses right now, but that was good news. The COVID update, we're continually to monitor that. Right now, our numbers are not very high, but we're continuing to monitor that. I just have one other one. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Martin to give a quick update on our book review process.
Am I good there? Mr. Wall, Mrs. Harris, President McDonald, trustees, just wanted to share with you guys as requested at the last board meeting, kind of where we're at and where the media specialists are underneath Dr. Groover's guidance. Unfortunately, she's not here. She has strep throat. I talked to her today, well, barely talked to her today. She's got, not able to be here. So, wanted to fill you guys in kind of on the whole process. And to go backwards, remember, the process is internal reading, kind of going through and inventorying, number one, everything we have. And then looking at all of the different titles and books that we have on our shelves, going through those internally. And then we did also have some books that were brought forth by community members that had some concern. And then we went through the internal review process. I will tell you, going through that process was great. We identified some areas that we needed to make some slight modifications and changes on to hopefully put us in a better situation. So, with that being said, I'll kind of share where we're at in terms of total numbers. And this is referenced in a memo that you guys also received. So, in terms of the initial reading process, so that's where the media specialists are just looking over their, looking over their books on their shelves, all 300,000 of them. In terms of books that were removed for poor condition, so this doesn't mean that they were completely gone. It means that the title might still exist, but we did have some that were in poor condition. That was around 4,200 books and 3,000 titles that were removed just because they were in poor condition. Again, that doesn't mean the title is completely gone. It just means the book's in bad condition. We had 100 titles that were removed because they were outdated. Some of the information might, in there, might have been not true anymore. Books that reference Pluto as a planet might be one of them, just for an example. We had one lost title, and then there were five titles that were removed because they were not age appropriate. So, again, as your media specialists are going through, they're looking at age appropriate, they're looking at condition, they're looking at whether or not the things are outdated or otherwise. In terms of the internal review process, again, this is the process that we were revisiting and was shared with this group, I think, one or two meetings ago. Want to share those results, the initial results, and we do have some others there. So, there were two books that were deemed inappropriate and will be, will be, or are removed from Dearborn Public School Libraries and on our do not purchase list. Those books are Push and Red White and Royal Blue. So, we also had two other books that came to us that were at both the middle school and the high school level. They were deemed inappropriate at the middle school level and restricted to the high school level. Those two books were Eleanor and Park and The Haters. And then books that were determined to be appropriate were The Lovely Bones and Flamer. We also have books that are next to be reviewed. There are three of them that were on the Sora site that were ebooks. So, because we didn't have them, the media specialists were not familiar with them. They hadn't seen them, hadn't read them. Those three books will be next up. Those are And They Lived, This Book Is Gay, and All Boys Aren't Blue. And then there are, there's a series of four other books. Captain Marvel, Carol Danvers, The Secrets of Boys, Summer Boys, and A Court of Thorns and Roses. That's a whole series that will be the next group that will get reviewed by the media specialists internally. So, remember, the internal review process is just the media specialists in two groups, either elementary or secondary. They review them. Then those results, or these results, will be, get communicated to the parent or the community member that asked for them to be reviewed. That community member then, at that point, has kind of three options. Option number one, okay, it is what it is. Option number two, I'm going to opt my child out. Or option number three, it would go to the reconsideration, which is the nine-person panel of teachers, parents, and a student, if there's permission, for them to read the book and then make a final determination in terms of should it go, should it go, should it go on our shelves or not?
There is someone that has the floor. Please be respectful and listen to the speaker. Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. And then last thing, there were just some minor tweaks and modifications to the internal process, but I'm not going to go through each of those. So, that's where we are today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. That concludes the superintendent report.
Mr. Martin, still a couple of questions. So, this is the internal, mostly contrary on internal process.
Yes, this is just the media specialists.
So, there is the opt-out, there's the book challenge.
If this is going to continue, I would like to know what are our rights if we keep getting interrupted?
Now, we do have the right to ask you to leave if you try to interrupt.
This is a public meeting. You need to listen to what's going on, and when you have your chance to speak, you will be able to come up and speak. Now is not your turn. It's not your turn to speak. Thank you.
So, sorry about that, Mr. Martin.
That's okay.
So, there are other options for parents?
Yes.
My question is, there was two books that were deemed appropriate with the first phase. So, now, can you explain?
Yeah, so the, do you want to be?
Second phase, please.
Second phase is that communicate, that information will get communicated to the community member, parent, whomever it is that had some concern initially with those books. And then the parent at that point, if they want to take that book to the reconsideration committee, then we'll choose the reconsideration committee, which will be nine different people. They'll have around 45 days to be able to read the book, and then they'll come back and vote on the book to determine whether it should, is or isn't appropriate for our whole collection and should or shouldn't be there. The parent could also not go that route and just opt their child completely out of these two books. Or the parent could say, hey, it is what it is, and I'm good with whatever it is. I'm just going to tell my child not to check those books out as well.
So, if I'm hearing you correct, if I'm that parent that challenged one of those books, and I still feel very strong that it's an appropriate book?
Yep, you can opt your-
We just explained, I cannot always use the opt-up, but what you just explained is quote unquote, like an appeal process.
Yeah, and it goes to that reconsideration nine-person committee. Correct. And then they'll, they'll all read the book, they'll have some dialogue, and then they'll vote on the appropriateness of it for the collection.
Obviously, we have that information in front of me right here. I just want to make sure it's out there too. So, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts, I thought it was. Trustee Watts?
Mr. Martin, you had said that you had, that they had started the review, the internal of looking through the books and getting rid of several titles that maybe have been outdated and just kind of worn-
Yep.
-worn down. So, with 300,000 books, how many books do you think we've gone through? What percentage? Right?
I don't even want to take a guess there. Not very many. The first, the first process was inventorying, number one, just what do we have on shelves? And mind you, all 14 of our media specialists, in addition to monitoring and taking care of their media, their libraries, many of them are shared between buildings, and all of them, I think, are at least teaching at an elementary level for a full day. So, the time that they have to put here, it's not 100% being able to be focused here. So, we started with inventorying, and then the priority was starting with high school, weeding there, and moving our way down. I could, I could try to find out for you, but I don't even want to try to guess.
All right, thank you.
My guess wouldn't do it justice.
Trustee Moszep?
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
The first one is, after the nine-member committee makes its decision, what are still the options? Can the parents still ask for reconsideration from the superintendent, from the board members?
The way the process and policy is written, no. At that point, the review has gone through an internal review of the media specialists who are experts on being able to determine appropriateness for our selection. They'll, they have been familiar with it. They've looked at age appropriateness, they've looked at reviews. Then from there, it goes to the nine. And the nine is a really well-rounded, well-rounded group. From there, the decision is, at least the way the process is now, the decision is final.
The other question is, if those books are being challenged for sexually explicit materials, how is that being determined? And especially even the new orders? Are there guidance that is given to the library specialists of, yeah, this book is, has a lot of sexuality, sexual explicit materials that should be removed?
Right. So, that, that's something that we've been talking about a lot in terms of the weeding process, which is, hey, I have 20,000 books in my collection, and as I'm ordering, following the same set of guidelines in terms of age appropriateness, reviews, and then collaboratively having a discussion by level. So, similarly, how a team of algebra teachers would talk about, hey, what do we want to teach today and how are we going to assess it? Our media specialists have spent a lot of time as a secondary group, as an elementary group, really kept collaborating and calibrating in terms of what that order process looks like to ensure that we're maintaining the whole selection as one group, right? So, we aren't just individuals making a decision based on our specific library. We're making a joint decision based on the whole district. So, yes, using those same guidelines, Trustee Moszep, to make those decisions and doing that collaboratively, not in isolation.
Anyone else?
Just one more question about the parents that are on this committee, I believe. How are they, how are they handpicked?
So, we sent out that, that form for anyone that's interested. And what the process is at this point is, parents will just be randomly selected. Once you're selected once, you won't be selected again until all the parent, the full parent list has been exhausted. And then it'll cycle back around to them. Again, the expectation on that reconsideration committee is everyone reads the book, right? And then has a decision or makes a decision based on age appropriateness and the ratings, and ultimately, should this belong on our shelves or should this not?
Mr. Martin, when a parent is chosen for this group, do they need to sign off saying that they are going to read the book and?
So, the expectation when people signed up on the form to enter their name in was, hey, I agree to do this. We will have that part, that expectation, again, when we meet with them. Outside of having them write a book report, which I don't know that I would want to do as an adult, it's going to be kind of hard to do that, but the hope is that they're invested in this, just like we are.
Absolutely. Trustee Petrikov?
Well, to that, and I'm assuming then, when they get ready to vote, that there's going to be some kind of discussion amongst all of them about all those points?
Yes.
And, and why they've made the decision. Is this going to be a, a public vote with the nine, or is this going to be anonymous?
Anonymous.
Okay.
Anonymous. And there will be an opportunity, sorry, Trustee Petrikov, an opportunity when they reconvene after they read it, to have some discourse around, around the book.
That's why I wanted to make sure, so that everybody understands where the perspectives are.
Yes.
And, and why conversation is going in a certain direction or not when it comes time to make that vote.
Absolutely.
Trustee Thorp?
Is the expectation that the parent, if chosen, is just going to be on the committee for that one book?
So, it'll be book by book, right? So, the, the parent who put the complaint won't be on that committee. It'll be another group of parents. So, that parent, the parent who made the suggestion or had the concern may serve down the road on one of them, but not on the one that they, that they had an issue with or challenged, correct.
And then the other question I would have on that is, how often will we open up the process for parents if they want to be a participant in this?
So, that, it's, on the form that was shared, I think, two board meetings before. It is still live, that form is still live. So, if parents are interested, they could be signing up right now on their smartphones or at home.
Thanks.
Yep.
Trustee Barry?
Just to follow up on the second question from Trustee Moszep. A few meetings ago, I asked for, you know, are legal to get involved to see, to make sure that, you know, we're working within the law? And I believe Trustee Watts and others supported me on this. I did a little bit of work with, this is a case of 1982, Board of Education Islandry's School District versus Pico. And all the way to Supreme Court, and almost, I would say, like, the supermajority of the judges wrote an opinion on this. And it was very, very clear that the Supreme Court said, "School boards, the Board of Education, must work within the First Amendment." We actually take an oath to do so every time we're elected to this board. And just, I mean, it's a long, I'll be able to share it if anybody wants to see it. It says justices were very clear by saying, "School boards could not remove books to suppress ideas." So, why is that important? Yeah, school boards, seven people shouldn't be making decisions for the, you know, when it, when it comes to the books. It's a parental right at every level, local, state, and federal. Parental rights are the most important rights. And last time I checked, parent rights, parental rights are God-given rights. They're God-given rights. So, we, we respect that, but at the same time, we have to work within the law. We can't allow people to, to judge other people, judge books at the expense of others. So, I mean, I don't mind people coming up here and screaming at us and telling us what we're doing wrong. I'm personally okay with that. I don't like interruptions, but personally okay with people. I want to hear from people. But this is where we're at. We can't. I know, I know, I just said, don't interrupt me when I'm talking. I don't know what else to say. Anyways. Yeah, okay, so, so, let me finish, let me finish.
You did not-
There are some districts, there are some districts that are jumping the gun and secretly doing what they need to do, but, you know, again, ACLU's all over that, and most are backpedaling. Most are backpedaling now. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Martin. Thank you for-
You do not have the floor.
When it's time for you to talk, you will be called up and you'll be able to speak. Until then, please be respectful and listen to the person who has the floor.
I'm done. I'm good. Thank you.
And I'm tired of warning you. Next item, please. Is everyone's good?
I'm good.
Recognition and acknowledgements? Accommodations?
I will adjust this since Mr. Martin is a little taller than I am. A lot of people are taller than I am. All right. Accommodations for this evening. First, from the district, we want to give commendations to Rory Gill and Bill Needham for making the in-person DPS Virtual Science Day possible at the Administrative Service Center. Thank you to Jeff Murphy and SFE for preparing breakfast and lunch for the, for the virtual K-12 students as well. From the high school, commendations to Dearborn High School's marching band. The band received a superior rating at the MSBOA Marching Band Festival in October. Band director Brian McCloskey also received positive comments from parents from other schools at the event praising DHS students for their positive encouragement for other bands who were performing. Commendations to the Etzel Ford Counseling Department for organizing the College and Career Fair for the Dearborn community last Thursday. Many colleges participated in the event, had a great audience and great attendance. Students and families had the opportunity to learn about their options after high school. Thank you to all the colleges and trade schools that attended. Commendations to Dearborn High Vocal Music Students who competed at the Michigan Vocal Music Association Music Theater Solo and Ensemble, say that five times real fast, festival on Saturday. The festival was held at Oxford High School. Students prepared and memorized two music theater selections. Congratulations to students who earned first division ratings. Julius Owens, solo with a perfect score. Savannah Caputo, solo. And Ava, Ava Asamacher, and Elena Cazdito, who did a duet. Commendations to Jeff Del Judas, Fortson's Athletic Director. He was recently named the Athletic Director of the Year for Region 11 by the Michigan Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. At the middle school level, commendations to DPS Virtual Science teacher Nancy Hadad for ordering, packing, and facilitating the delivery of science experiment supplies to 138 middle school students. Ms. Hadad spent time after school on three days and traveled to several buildings across the district to make it convenient for parents and students to pick up supplies. And finally, at the elementary school level, commendations to Lindberg Elementary School, which was recently named a lighthouse academic honor roll school. The honor roll, the honor recognizes Lindberg for going above their leader in me goals for leadership, culture, and academics. The award was given to 26 out of 5,000 leader in me schools across the country. Those are commendations for this evening.
Next item, please. Acknowledgement of donations?
Mr. Mustenin, I'll move it back up. Thank you. A donation of $500 has been offered to Oakman Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for televisions. A donation of $5,244 has been offered to Gear Park Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for two projectors. A donation of $100 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for endangered species adoption. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for purposeful play. A donation of $450 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for binoculars. A donation of $780 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Legos. A donation of $305.22 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for tables. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for inside-out literacy. A donation of $326 has been offered to Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for academic games awards. A donation of $30,000 has been offered to Salina School by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with Cliff Bells to be used for an outdoor classroom atrium. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn High School class of 1972 to be used towards a golf cart. A donation of $100 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Judy Beal to be used for field trips for fourth and fifth grade students. And finally, a donation of $100 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Ramsey Shawser to be used for field trips for fourth and fifth grade students. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. A regular P-12 meeting, October 10th, 2022, Board Report 22-46. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved. Support.
We have a motion by Trustee Barry and supported by Trustee Dan Brogio. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dan Brogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorp?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Special reports. P-12 audit report, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. As required by law, we're required to have an annual audit annually for our July 1st through June 30th timeframe. And Plant Moran Crescent, or Plant Moran performed that audit this year. I'd like to introduce Mr. Higgins and Ms. Tack for the audit report.
Thank you and good evening. As was mentioned, my name is Jeff Higgins. With me is Laura Tack. We're with Plant Moran. We are the district's independent auditing firm, here to discuss the results of the district's audit for its financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2022. So, there's three documents that come out of our audit to the financial statements. There's the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audit financial statements. There's a separate federal awards supplemental information, which includes our audit, our separate audit for the federal programs administered by the district. And finally, there's the report to the Board of Education, which provides information and insight into the audit process and results itself. So, it's important to keep in mind that the financial statements include both the P-12 School District, along with Henry Ford College, and the Henry Ford College Foundation. Of course, we're here tonight to talk about the results for the P-12 audit. So, as the district's independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. So, I'm certainly pleased to report here tonight that as the result of our audit procedures, we've rendered what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This will be the highest level of assurance that we can provide on a set of financial statements. And again, there was no difficulties, disagreements with management throughout the conduct of the audit, and no material weaknesses or other significant deficiencies in internal control identified. So, overall, a very clean outcome for the audit for this year, again, ended June 30th, 2022. And Laura's going to lead us through a few of the highlights for the financials this year.
The primary focus of our presentation is going to be the general fund, which is the district's primary operating fund. Taking a look at the balance sheet first, you'll see that total assets as of June 30th, 2022, is approximately $110.7 million. The main categories of assets are cash and investments of $57 million and receivables of $38.5 million. Those receivables include approximately $35.6 million due from the state of Michigan for the July and August state aid payments. Moving on to liability- Moving on to liabilities, you'll see that total liabilities as of June 30th in the general fund were $71.6 million. The main liabilities are going to be employee compensation, payroll-related liabilities of $31 million, and due-to-other funds of $27 million. Overall, you'll see that fund balance decreased year over year. It decreased from $40.5 million as of June 30th, 2021 to $39 million as of 2022, representing approximately a 3.7% decrease year over year. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund income statement, which is known as the Statement of Revenue, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. You'll see that total revenue in 2022 in the general fund is approximately $242 million. The main source of revenue for the general fund is state sources, followed by local sources and then inter-district resources. These inter-district resources include categoricals from the state and various amounts received from the ISD for special education. Moving on to expenditures, you'll see that expenditures are broken down by function. So instruction is obviously the main function. This relates to direct classroom and classroom-related activities. Instruction is approximately 62% of the district's expenditures, followed by support services at 35% and then other at 2%. Now, taking a look at this kind of overall, you will see that that increase in revenue from $227 million in 2021 to $242 million in 2022 is largely driven by a 9% increase in the state source revenue.
And then finally, just to tie it all together, we wanted to spend a couple of minutes just talking about the general fund fund balance. So again, as was mentioned, it's, you know, fund balance is basically the assets minus the liabilities for the general fund. And the annual difference between your revenue and your expenditures either adds to or subtracts from the fund balance on an annual basis. And again, as we just saw, that there is roughly a 1.5 million reduction in the general fund balance for the year ended June 30th, 2022. So again, fund balance is important because it represents essentially the financial reserves for the district. It allows a district to fund for unplanned expenses that might occur during the year and also helps insulate the district against, you know, unexpected revenue losses and funding instability. And so then the question becomes, well, how much fund balance is an adequate level of fund balance? Fund balance is often assessed as a percentage of expenditures. So if you take your fund balance at the end of the year, as we talked about, of roughly $39.1 million, and you divide that by your expenditures of about $233 million, that gives you a percentage of about 16.7% as of June 30th, 2022. So you can see the, the gold line there represents the state average for the last few years. Now again, the complete data for 2022 isn't available yet, but you can see from, for 2018 through 2021, the district's historically been just above that state average level. And as another reference point, the Michigan School Business Officials, or MSBO, recommends a fund balance percentage of about 15%. So you can see the last several years, you've been right around that recommended level of 15%. And that concludes our presentation for this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Trustee Mosip?
I just want to make sure and clarify the decrease in local sources from 2021 to 2022. Is that because of the old harmless that we were not able to recoup?
I can answer that one. But yes, you are correct, because we had to accrue back because they changed the law. And when they passed the budget in August, and we've already collected our collections from the city of Dearborn, which is 100% summer. So therefore, we have collected it, and that's why this year in 2223, we are not letting old harmless to basically pay back that money to the taxpayers.
And that gave taxpayers some savings.
Correct.
On their tax bill. So just making sure that's clear, why there's a decrease and where, where that decrease came from. Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I have a question, I have a comment. Year in, year out, you come in front of us and you tell us all the good news. I just want to give credit where credit is due, with Mr. Tom Wall and his team. So we really appreciate all the great work that you do for us. Thank you very much.
I want to add Tom and his team.
Yeah, thank you. I have a very good performing team that I rely heavily on, and they always well perform.
And we rely on all of you. So thank you for your work.
And just a follow-up to the parents who are out there. We're just, we're just discussing some big numbers, $200 million, $300 million. This is your money. So yes, we want to be concerned with issues, current issues, but it's probably a good idea to get involved and ask questions there. And there I go again, being interrupted. Thank you very much.
Do I need to have you removed? I hate to do that, but you have to show some consideration to the people that are here trying to absorb the information that is being given to them. You need to show some self-control. No, you don't apparently. I, oh, you disrespect every person in this room by continuing to talk. So please, please be respectful when someone other than yourself has the floor. Everyone in this room can hear you. So please keep your thoughts and your comments to yourself until it's time for you to come and speak with us. Everyone in the room can hear you. Everyone in this room wants to hear what is going on in this district. Your continuing comments are disrupting our meeting. Please show some self-control. Thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports, social-emotional learning, Mr. Mike Asale.
Greetings, President McDonald, Executive Director Wall, and Board Trustees. Welcome and thank you for this opportunity today to talk about social-emotional learning here in Dearborn Public Schools. I'm going to briefly give you guys an overview, but before I do that, I have some two incredible colleagues here and leaders truly in social-emotional learning here in Dearborn. We have Dr. Ola Bazey-Gates, who's a special education coordinator, and Ms. Miriam Alaway, who is a behavior specialist within the special education department. Very blessed to be working with both of them. Before I get into social-emotional learning, I do want to talk a little bit about whole child and whole child approaches here in Dearborn Public Schools. You know, a lot of time we think about schools, we talk about the rigor of the academia, math, reading, so on and so forth. But we also want to talk about whole child and how, what it looks like from a social-emotional perspective, mental health perspective, and just from a restorative perspective within our district. Last year, if you recall, we trained the entire staff in what we call trauma-informed instruction. We actually created a train-the-trainer model to where we have over 70 staff members who were certified-trained trauma presenters, who continue to train other staff members in the district on what trauma-informed instruction was. We felt that was important, especially coming off the pandemic year. We definitely know, you know, that a lot of our kiddos and a lot of our families suffered some trauma just during the pandemic. But even before that, we really, those are some approaches we really wanted to look at for the district. Obviously, we have some of our schools within the, the district who are also PBIS schools, Positive Behavior Support Schools. And a lot of the things that I'm going to be talking about today, or the team will be talking about today, kind of fall under that umbrella. In addition, I kind of already talked a little bit about restorative practices. Restorative practices was an initiative we took on, I would say about six years ago, and I'm happy to kind of report, it's still very strong within the district. And restorative practices or restorative justices, as some of us may know, is really about building culture and empathy within our schools and just truly understanding perspectives of one another. Thanks to the board and Dr. Maleko and, and the entire cabinet, and increasing school social workers. I believe now we have more than 50 school social workers in the district. I know that's something that we've mentioned a while ago. I could tell you when I started back in 2016 in special education administration, we were just at about 29, I think 30, school social workers. So we've done a really nice job at making sure to increase those supports. But in addition to that, trying to ensure with some of the programming we have with some of those supports to meet and reach as many children as we, as we possibly can. I also want to kind of thank MDE and Executive Director Farage, Executive Director Martin, and Executive Director Swor. Whereas if you look at affective education and social-emotional learning right now, it is part of our MyKid process, which I'm going to talk about a little bit, which is really the school improvement process in the district, where again, it incorporates the academics along with the whole child approaches. We've also partnered with great organizations. I'm just going to quickly talk about access to where we have some school therapists within some of our buildings now, some mental health therapists. Obviously, there's a process there. We would have to talk to families, get some consent if there's a specific need. However, we're very, very happy to provide those services in our schools. Finally, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just wanted to talk about the MyKid process, which is the school improvement process here in Dearborn Public Schools. You're going to see two major goals. One of them's going to be an academic goal, the other one's going to be an affective goal. And we're going to use the MTSS process to kind of discuss both of these specific goals. In fact, this past Tuesday, a lot of our building teams at the school districts were working on their school improvement plans or their MyKid plans for their individual schools and kind of using this framework to where not only are we talking about how we're going to close the achievement gap with language, arts, and math, but we're also talking about affective education and education, educating the whole child. We're really going to focus with social-emotional learning on the CASL competencies, which are five social-emotional competencies, which were adopted through the Michigan Department of Education. And that's where I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Bazey Gates, who's going to talk about those things.
Good evening, everyone. Was, as Mr. Asale mentioned about the importance of SEL. When we talk about SEL, what's social-emotional learning? It is very, very important, you know, an integral part of education and human development. This is a way of teaching our students about, you know, core values, character, how to be productive citizens. It's also the process through chi, through children learn, you know, and acquire applied knowledge, skills, values, morals, you know, to, to feel with others, to have empathy, and also to establish and maintain a supportive, healthy life and also building resiliency. So when we talk about CASL, CASL stands for Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. And we use it, we implement it in our school district throughout, throughout our staff. The first, you know, competency is self-awareness. When we talk about self-awareness, it's important to teach our students about, you know, understand your emotion, their feeling, their thoughts, and also, you know, how they impact our behavior when we talk, when we feel with others, you know. And for example, when we know about ourselves, our biases, you know, and our prejudice, and have an open and my, open-minded and growth mindset. The second one is about self-management. Self-management, how to regulate your emotion, your feelings, you know, and anything make you stressed out, how you identify, you know, how you feel about things. The third one, responsible decision-making. For example, when we make a decision, how we make a decision, whether it's personal, interpersonal, you know, open-minded, you know, relationship with other and social problems. So when we solve an issue, so it's very important to teach them responsible, responsible decision-making. The fourth one is social awareness. For example, you know, taking others' perspective, understanding how people recognize their strengths, their weaknesses, and feeling with others. And the last one is relationship skills, which is very important as well. For example, how to communicate with others and you develop a positive relationship with others. I will turn it now to my colleague, Ms. Alaway, to talk about the three-tiered MTSS framework.
Thank you. Good evening. As Mr. Asale mentioned earlier, one of the focuses this year for the.
May I ask you to move a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry. Thank you. So one of the focuses this year for the MyKIP is the affective. And here are some of our goals for the affective. And our goal is to work on making them consistent across the district. So I would like you to vision the triangle. And at the bottom of the triangle, we have our tier one, which are our universal supports that, that provide supports for all stakeholders involved. Within tier one, we have our trails, which is a research-based evidence that provides supports and early intervention for mental health. And we have ongoing PDs that will focus on the five competencies for SEL. And just the beginning of the school year, we trained all staff on the five competencies, and we will continue to do so. And we are integrating SEL in the, in the academic instruction. So then we have our tier two, which is our middle tier, which is more targeted interventions. And as you see listed, we have trails continued. This is just to show a visual of how each layer of, how each layer is an additional support to the next. Mr. Asale, you mentioned restorative interventions before, and restorative interventions really goes hand in hand with the five competencies because it not only focuses on the individual's self-awareness and having them understand how they felt in the moment of a situation and what they can do later on, but also how they've affected the other person involved. Check-in-check-out is a research-based intervention that focuses on positive interventions and supports, and it allows, allows that open communication between the staff, the family, and the student. Then we move on to our tier three, which is that top tier that provides more intensive and individualized support. And part of our tier three is a wraparound, which coordinate, which is a coordinated meeting between the staff, the family, and also any outside organization that the family is working with. This truly looks at the child, at the whole child, and ensures that we are using the same words and that, you know, all our interventions are, you know, working together. And then we have embedded community partnerships with SAFE, Access, and so many other community partners, and also continued data tracking. We plan on, you know, looking at our data from the beginning to the end to see what is working and what we need to continue working on.
So in conclusion, when we talk about the five SEL competencies, as I mentioned, the self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, social awareness, and relationship skills are very, very vital and important, you know, to the teaching and understanding our, our students in the schools. So the same way we focus on academic, we focus also on the social-emotional learning for our students. So our goal, as you know, is to, to really develop our students to live a happy and positive life. Thank you.
This is Dr. Bazey-Gates' favorite slide. I don't know if the trustees could see it, but hand in hand, together we can. Thank you all, and I don't know if any of you have any questions or comments.
Trustee Watts?
One question, because we know you cannot have, you can never have enough acronyms in education. Can you remind me, what does MTSS stand for?
It's the Multi-Tierred System of Supports. Formally, the district used to call it RTI, Response to Interventions. And basically, what the multiple tiers system of supports is, it breaks things down into three different tiers of instruction, where your tier one would be universal, what's good for every single child. As you get into tier two and three, it'll be more individualized.
Thank you.
Trustee Mosip?
A question about teachers' training, so general ed are being also trained on social-emotional learning?
Yeah, and I, and I apologize, Trustee Mosip. I meant to mention that on my very first slide. In fact, the very first PD we had this year was the CASL five competencies with social-emotional learning. And hopefully, it'll be an ongoing as well, as we continue to trajectory through the entire school year. And I could tell you, there's some things being done at the individual level in individual buildings too, depending on their needs there. But the very first training we did have for this school year was the five competencies with SEL.
And aside from special ed parents, also general ed, how are the parents, how are they being informed of this type of instruction, this style of instruction? Are we doing that at individual presentations at different buildings?
So some of them may have that during some of their parent meetings, their title parent meetings within the building, the SEL focus. I know that we do have some groups here within the district to where there is a strong push for some of the family parent training as well, to where we're incorporating some SEL. I know Dr. Bazey-Gates works very closely, again, with the EL department through some of their parent trainings too.
Thank you.
Jesse Petrikoff?
I don't know if you can do this or not, just off the cuff, but how would some of this be incorporated into a day-to-day classroom setting? What would it look like? Because a lot of people are concerned about so much is trying to be put into a classroom day. And we just want to see how, how does this naturally fit into the classroom setting?
That's a great question. That's a great question. And you know, part of, part of kind of our goals was how do we embed social emotional learning? So there is an additional prep, and there's so many things going on during the day. I'm going to use the restorative practices as an example. A lot of people believe that like restorative practices is that circle we do when we want to restore a relationship, but it's so much more than that. It's how we interact with one another. You know, modeling how we can speak to one another, I think, is a way where you can embed some of the social emotional learning. I know in a lot of classrooms, you do have what you call bell ringers, or you know, the first few minutes. You know, incorporating some social emotional right in there within the first few minutes, I think, could be very, very powerful. I know some high schools are using some of their, what we call traditionally tea time, where whether it was silent reading or whatever the situation is, maybe to do some tier two and tier three social emotional work. So it's something we're very, very cognizant of. We don't want to give more on the plates of, you know, specific staff members, including teachers. I could tell you, our social workers also do a very nice job pushing into classrooms and having social emotional learning lessons. I know you heard the word trails here a couple times, which was actually supported by the University of Michigan and almost adopted, I believe, now nationwide. I could tell you, they're very short, 15 to 20-minute lessons, but I think the goal is, and we're continuing to work with this, I know, within our school improvement committee on a district level led by Ms. Faqmi Farage, on how we continue to embed some social emotional within our daily lessons, as opposed to having it at a separate standalone.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Oh, yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Asale and his team, and Trustee Watts. You'll be happy to know that they applied for a $3 million grant for additional social workers. And for that funding, now it's, it's a national grant, so it's very competitive, but we're starting to look at these additional grants to help offset our general fund money. So I want to thank their team for doing so.
Thank you. Well, we needed some of Tom's help, so I know he's always very humble, but yeah, thank you. Hopefully that works out. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for the work that you do. It certainly benefits our students.